Good morning. Want to welcome all of you to the November 8, 2022, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and thank those that have joined us in chambers on a rainy, but much appreciated rainy day. We've been dry for many, many months, so glad you're all here safe and dry with us this morning. Also, welcome our viewers as well. And with that, I'm going to turn to our clerk, Phil Evans, to call a roll to establish quorum, make some announcements. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll get right into the morning's agenda.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Desmond Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Let the record reflect that Supervisor Kennedy will actually not be in attendance today, and he won't be joining us remotely as well.
Okay.
Okay. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, November 11 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters. When the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in queue to make your public comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls to the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk staff for assistance, or contact our office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Phil. Lisa Travis, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just as we embark on the agenda, just a reminder for those who may be tuned in, not that folks wouldn't know this, but today is Election Day. The polls are open until 8:00. And certainly would encourage folks to get out and vote if they haven't already done so. So, all right. With that, then, we're going to go to our off-agenda comments. I have three speakers that have signed up in chambers, and so we again welcome them this morning. First, McKenzie, and then Dan Aderhold, followed by Andrea Henson. Are you still writing your notes down? You want to wait? You want to pass for a moment?
No, I'm actually done, but I do want to say that it'll be like four-plus minutes, but you'll understand what I mean by this when I say "love is bigger than" and more access than a three-minute public comment. Good morning, Board. My name is McKenzie Wilson. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm a community organizer in this county. The last time I spoke, I tried to paint for you a picture of what the world we all know as possible looks like. I don't feel like I did the best job, so I decided to do it again, but instead in the form of a spiritual mind treatment. It's one of the most powerful prayers on the planet. I know that love is all there is. It is in the air I breathe, the words I speak, and it is in every person that I see. It is in this room. It's sitting in those chairs, making decisions. It's the department heads funding the right ones. It's this community telling you what the right ones are. It is in all things. Love is in schools that foster our creative mind. They don't have us saluting to long-dead and harmful white men and condition us as we prepare for exploitation, but instead the classrooms are set up in circles because love knows that learning is not linear. The lessons are just not about how to read and write, but instead they teach us how to innovate and create, instead of how to work to survive. Love is growing up with access to parks, to healthcare, to joy, to opportunity, to housing and stability, to healthy food and community gardens with more than enough. One day, it looks like communal kitchens and pubs that don't look like us having to serve each other for money, but instead we just show up with our own stuff, some from those gardens, because love knows we love to create for each other and eat and drink together. It's access to love when we don't feel well, or when we don't do something right. Love is there when we're tired, or when our minds not right. It shows up most when we don't do good. Love shows up the hardest in these moments, because even love knows you wouldn't be able to know love or be love without knowing the feeling of, or having the ability, to hurt and hate. Love is investing in learning love. Love of self, love of each other, love of our planet, love of our limitless potential, just as expansive as the limitless universe. Love is admitting when we're wrong, because love will allow us to admit it without fear or shame. Love is kind. Love is patient. Love does not make decisions without intention. Love is putting our creative minds together to find solutions that are best for us and our children's futures. Love is investing in the love of us. Love does not isolate. Love does not harm. Love does not punish. Love does not lock us up and throw away the key. Love is not crisis-treated with jail cells and guns and guards. Love is showing up so hard that we don't need jail walls, because what it know that love is, and how love is created, is by education, healthy food, housing stability, hospitals, support for our mental health, and shows up and shows us how to experience all of the things in healthy ways, from drugs to healthy relationships with ourselves and the world around us. Love is in our neighborhoods, not just as parks and as commons for us to hang out in, but as centers for everything that does not make us feel love. Love is transportation to love. Love is universal access to the ways we make sure we can see in the dark, keep ourselves warm, share information, and stay connected to each other and to love. Love is decision-making spaces big enough for all of our love and our voices. Love is not poverty. Love is not austerity. Love is not being stuck in a rat race, chasing paper to survive and then punished for not being able to play by the rules, making up our own, or simply being too tired to keep going. Love is letting us rest. Love is fostering our ability to know what we need, how to have boundaries and say no, and love is recognizing when things aren't love. Love is about the presence of all things, not its absence. Love is a verb. Love is a doing word. Love is abundance. Love is care, and love is freedom, and with love like that, we don't need cages. I give thanks for love. I am in awe of love that could even make these words and this idea and these ideas exist. I am humbled by knowing that I am just a piece of that love, and because I recognize the love in all of you, I am grateful for your love too. Together, our loves make these words and what love is true. With that, I release these words to all of you and into the creative mind that has already said, "Love is all there is, and so it is." Amen. Now, I'm going to go vote in love, and I'll see you later about how to talk and invest in love using AB 109 funding. Have a great day.
Thank you, McKenzie. And we got stuck on one second there, so you did just fine. Thanks, McKenzie. Okay. All right. Then next, following McKenzie is Dan Aderhold. Dan, thanks for sharing, McKenzie.
Just give it to... Sheen, just go... Thanks, Dan. Okay. I am publicly requesting, as a American River Homeless Crew CEO, that these remarks of homeless pets being the cause of the eklai on the American River be stricken from you guys and retracted, because it's false. I got DNA evidence proving that the eklai on the American River Parkway, especially the Lower American River Parkway, as you guys see, is geese. You guys know this already. I know this, because this was filed in November 2021. What I'm angry about is the fact that my American River Homeless Crews and their pets are being attacked, because now the press and media and even our mayor try to say that it's the homeless pets that are causing the eklai, when it clearly states right here Paradise Beach is a destination for residents. Nearby river park neighborhood dogs were found to be a consistent source of dog eklai found in an official contamination along the left bank of the river, along Paradise Beach, which is nowhere near a Lower American River Parkway. It is... I'll show you guys.
Take your time. I stopped the clock, Dan, so you... Okay, you got it?
Here we are. My American River Homeless Crews are here, all along this American River Homeless Crew and Discovery Park right here. That's where my crews are. Here is where the eklai is. Paradise Beach, right here on the very end of this map, right here. Nowhere, miles and miles away from where my American River Homeless Crews are and where the news try to say the eklai is coming from our dog, homeless dogs and everything else, which was published on KCR3 News, ABC 10 News, and so on, which is false and misleading, and made everybody think my American River Homeless Crews and their pets out there are destroying the habitat and the homeless on American River Parkway destroying habitat, when actually it's the residents of our city going to Paradise Beach with their animals on the Lower Shore. I know it's election time. Every time election time happens, always a witch gets the homeless, and the paranoia of our citizens happens because of the media, telling them that the dog, homeless dogs, are causing the contamination when it's not. All right. Then therefore, this law is passed, you guys passed, based on lies, saying that the homeless pets are destroying the American River Parkway before those humans destroying the homeless and destroying the American River Parkway, and that's a lie. Downhill homeless pets destroying the American River Parkway, and that's a lie. Proving DNA to be a lie. Don, if you of all people, and Serna, Frost, you guys all up here, animal lovers, and you guys all animal lovers, how can you guys sit here and let this be thousands of dogs being killed? Because that's exactly what's going to happen. Thousands of dogs are going to be killed because of a lie. Also, the law was passed, you guys passed, using four-year-old pictures of still-hitting creek. That was another basis why you guys passed this law, saying the homeless are destroying the American River Parkway. Again, that's a lie. Again, my American River Homeless Crews were the ones who were there cleaning that park, during that picture Roland Brady took. My crews were there taking, cleaning that picture area with Roland Brady, when those pictures were taken four years ago, almost five. Those are four or five-year-old pictures that are used to make that law. I took the bite of that, you know, because I know the homeless do move off the American River Parkway, but in due time, when affordable housing is built, they don't want shelters. Shelters cannot hold their pets. You guys know this. All we're asking is for the homeless to be allowed to stay on the American River Parkway and let them live there until affordable housing is built. As long as they keep it clean and safe. Keyword, "keep it clean and safe." Go after the ones who are making a mess. Go after them, not the homeless who leave a clean camp. We'll back you guys 100% on this, because that's the problem. We always got the few that screw it for the many, and they are damaging our American River Parkway. Make no mistake about it. They are destroying the American River Parkway with needles and trash, but the hordes are. We are clearing them out. You cannot find no hoarder mess along the American River Park, Lower American River Parkway. I guarantee you that. I guarantee that that study that came out, I guess it was SacPics up or whoever it was, said they cleaned up 19 tons of trash. That was not in Discovery Park, and that was not over there off of Twin Rivers Bike Trail. I guarantee you that, because we keep it clean and safe over there, and I welcome you guys coming out there anytime. We keep it clean and safe out there, Don. Phil Serna, your district, we're keeping it clean and safe for everybody all the time. We're making sure there's no needles, because that's heaven's sake. We don't want no kids stepping on needle. You know, that's the worst-case scenario, but I definitely want this case where the dogs, they're innocent, they're an unspoken voice, they're the ones being attacked now. You guys are saying that the homeless pets are doing this when they're not, Don. The DNA proof is right there. Matter of fact, this is a case for a civil lawsuit against Sacramento, because they're misleading the public and making them think the homeless pets are doing this, when this was published in November 2021, saying it wasn't.
Okay.
You know, we need to get this retracted, and the truth be set free, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your sharing with us this morning, bringing the information forward. Okay. And following Dan, we have Andrea Henson. Andrea? Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning. We can, we'll adjust that, just adjust the podium.
Is that good? Oh, my gosh. Look at that. I love technology.
We can make it even better.
That's right.
Good morning.
Can I start?
Go ahead.
So, good morning. I've never been here before. My name is Andrea Henson. I'm from Sacramento, born and bred in Oak Park. I was in the Bay Area for a while, and now I'm home practicing. I'm an attorney. I do criminal defense and civil rights. And I previously was in the Bay Area. I led the East Bay Community Law Center homeless practice. And I've been in encampments. I represented four of the largest encampments in Berkeley along the highway. We had about 160 people. And over a few years, I housed everybody, working with organizations and resources, the coordinated entry system, et cetera. Now, we have about eight that still need to be housed. I say all this because I have a lot of experience, and that's why I've come here. So, I came back home to take care of my mom in Oak Park, so I'm back where I know, and it's different, because there are homeless encampments in neighborhoods. I didn't see that in the Bay Area, right? That's not why I'm here. So, my managing attorney, Jennifer Mouses, I'm now with Mouses Criminal Defense. So, I'm right over here in court every day, and there's a gentleman who sits outside named Robert Jones. He has slept on that sidewalk for years. And why does he sleep at the jail? Because it's safe, right? If you're going to choose a place, and typically people who sleep alone outside are more vulnerable than those in encampments. So, Mr. Jones has been saying to my managing attorney, Ms. Mouses, that he has a housing voucher. So, she said, "Andrea, with your experience, can you help him?" And so I spoke to... Oh, my gosh, I'm already running out of time. I spoke to Mr. Jones, and basically what I want to tell all of you, the reason I'm here, is because I know as leaders, a lot of people brief you, right? And you're expecting a certain level of accountability and competence, and you guys are giving thousands of money to the... Thousands of dollars of money and funds to the homeless problem here. I have followed through with everything Mr. Jones has said, and no one has helped him. Basically, what has happened, especially with She-Ra, the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Program, is that he was issued a voucher. The Center for Independent Resources assisted him in 2018. He was issued a voucher in 2020. He has been laying on the sidewalk. He's 69-years-old, right across from She-Ra, and they said they couldn't find him. He gets his mail from the Gospel Rescue Mission, which many of you know, I'm sure, because of the homeless problem, you're very familiar with how homeless individuals get mail. He never received the voucher. Yesterday, we went to a meeting, and they said, "Thousands of people don't respond, and so we don't try to contact them." Now, Mr. Jones has tried and tried. In fact, Supervisor Serna, he's contacted your office, and what She-Ra told your office is not true. I followed up. My legal assistants, we've called She-Ra, and we had to wait over two-and-a-half hours. Yesterday, when I was waiting in line outside, people were crying, begging to get in for an appointment, having to bang on the doors. And I'm going to leave you with this, and please, if you could just give me 10 more seconds.
Go ahead.
Homeless individuals don't have electricity. The ability to charge their phones is extraordinarily difficult. The population that you're trying to house are most vulnerable, who need these vouchers. You all are putting up this big apartment complex on Stockton Boulevard and all of these things, that all rely on subsidies. To get these subsidies, you have to... It's set up for people who have resources. You have to be able to call. You have to be able to go online. The point-in-time counts tell you that the majority of this population is suffering with disabilities, mental disabilities predominantly, the elderly. A woman yesterday had edema. She had... It was cold. They're banging, and I'm watching this. And I asked them, "How come they can't leave a piece of paper?" Why do they have... The reason that Mr. Jones got an appointment was because the individual from the Center for Independent Living said, "I just walk my clients down there and bang on the door so they can get an appointment." And I said, "How would they know that?" So, I went with him, and I saw with my own two eyes, because what I've learned in helping the homeless population is that if you don't walk in their shoes... I went and lived in encampments as an attorney. I know when they talk about the coordinated entry system. So, I'm just going to leave you with this, because I could talk so much more, just for the voucher, just to get a voucher, not even Section 8, but like a site-specific voucher, which is what you're trying to do. We have a huge problem in Sacramento. I'm home. I see it, right? We all know. People on Nextdoor are angry. If you can't even get through, and your phone dies, and you can't even charge your phone, and they treat you like there's something wrong with you, because you didn't wait, and the only way to talk to someone is to go wait in the cold and bang on the door, if you can even get a ride. Most people don't have an attorney showing up with them. And so I'm just asking you, I'm not asking for money, really ask them, how do you reach out to people? And I'll leave it at that. I know I've talked too much, but I know that you guys are asking your staff and the agencies, but I'm telling you, from my experience, they're not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Andrea. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, Ms. Serna. I would just suggest that since you've made an effort, obviously, to come and address us this morning, you might want to do the same with the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency Commission. So, they actually have a commission where they take public comment, so I would suggest that you maybe address your grievances on behalf of yourself or whomever directly with SHRA's governing body.
Thank you so much. I'm, you know, I'm just getting used to local government, so I was going to go to City Council too and talk to the mayor. Berkeley, they all know, everyone knows me, because I would always come and say, "I'm not asking for money, but this is what's happening." So, thank you. I will go speak to them and City Council.
Well, and I would just say, again, this is off-agenda, Andrea, and thank you for being here, and welcome back to hometown. I guess I would just turn to Ann. Ann, we obviously coordinate very closely with the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, and obviously, this is, you know, a big task for all of us, because of just the numbers of folks that are unhoused. But I think, you know, your observations are important. Again, you saw them firsthand. You've shared them with us this morning. I guess I would just maybe ask Ann if we can follow up, and I don't... We see SHRA staff here this morning, they didn't have an item on the agenda, but we certainly can convey this. But I think we have a role in this as well, because again, we do coordinate on the programs, you said, with trying to help folks get housing and vouchers and Section 8. And, you know, the programs are... And subsidy programs oftentimes come through this board, at least in part, so I don't... Ann, maybe you can make some comments.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Cattari is here, and she is our liaison for SHRA, and she's going to offer a business card to the...
Okay. So, we're going to make a connection right here this morning, Andrea, since you took the time to come down. Ms. Cattari is in the audience, and she'll get a card. I think, you know, we'll do some follow-up and see if we can't help the Mr. Joneses and those that are, you know, in circumstances that may be parallel to what he is or worse, or, you know... Nonetheless, I think allowing folks to make those connections, doing our best to help them get connected with services and housing, so...
Don?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that Siobhan knows that my staff has already spent considerable time on this, so in order to maybe save time on your behalf, you might want to at least have a conversation with Mr. Chung, my special assistant.
I appreciate that, because as I mentioned, we have to coordinate. We have such a huge problem, and it's definitely so important that we follow through and accommodate those who just can't do what they're expecting them to do. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Andrea, and thank you, Supervisor Serna, for your office's assistance as well, so, good. And Ms. Cattari is right there, and she'll meet you at the top of the stairs. Thank you, Andrea, and you're welcome back anytime. Okay. I don't have any other off-agendas. Thanks to McKenzie and Ms. Aderhold and Ms. Henson for their comments and information this morning. And with that, then, do we have anybody on the phone?
We do. We have a couple of callers.
Okay. We have some off-agenda callers on the phone, so we'll go to the phones.
All right. Please transfer the first caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
All right. I'm just calling in regards to listening to some of the people that are talking. I know one lady had mentioned it's a small few that are making it bad for a lot of people, and another lady had mentioned that you guys aren't getting back to people, and so I can only believe that it's you small few people at this point that are deciding to make it more difficult, can you drive... That are deciding to make it more difficult for that bigger group of people, and that bigger group of people being the people of Sacramento. We bring multiple issues to you guys. You guys ignore them. You guys make fun of us. You guys intentionally do things to hinder our ability to be better, and then you sit up there and don't care. And you guys continue to collect these massive paychecks that we all pay into, and again, you guys don't care. So, I'm starting to think it's you few people that are making it difficult for us greater people. And I'll be providing more proof of this, such as you permitting your department leads or your program managers to lie while they're under oath. I provide you proof of that, what was done, nothing. Or even Rich Desmond. Rich? Yes, hello?
You're still on. Mr. Harris, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, I was getting a call. Even Rich Desmond, have you looked into like lighting up Howe Avenue? Have you looked into how many people have been hit on that street at night, because it's so dark, right there on Howe Avenue between West El Camino and I want to say Cottage? I mean, I'm sure people have brought this to your attention, Mr. Desmond, but if they've experienced what I've experienced, you don't get back to them, just like you have not gone back to me. And if you treat them like you treated me, when you get back to them, you promise them you'll get back to them, and then switch it up and say you won't, such as you've done to me, and I provided you with examples of that. Oh, yeah, Ryan, I'll give you a call tomorrow. Yes, we could meet in person. Then what happened to that meeting, Mr. Desmond? What happened to us talking, Mr. Desmond? Again, someone else probably brought this to your attention, and you probably ignored them, which could be the reason why another person was hit on Howe Avenue. I don't know if they died or not, but I know people in the past have died, and I'm sure when they died, their family has brought that to you. And again, what did you do? And the lady before me mentioned that no one's getting back, and the people, last time I was there, said, "No one's getting back." And in fact, Mr. Desmond, you tried to cut them off and say, "I'm going to stop you right there, because we do get back to you guys, and you're making it seem like we don't." Well, no, sir, you don't. That's why we're here. This many people can't make it seem like you don't.
Ryan, are you...
How much time do I have left?
Your eight seconds passed, so if you could conclude your...
Okay. it seem like you don't.
Ryan, you get-
How much time do I have left?
Your eight seconds passed, so if you could conclude your-
Okay.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'll wrap it up. I wasn't able to make it there in person. But again, as I continue to come, it just is more proof that you guys aren't doing what you're supposed to. Thank you for my time.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Okay.
And actually, that concludes our public comments.
Okay. All right, so I don't have any other off-agenda speakers, so thank you to our speakers this morning. And with that, then, we'll conclude the off-agenda portion, and we'll go into our agenda. So Flo, I know you have a number of items you want to point out, so we'll go in and we'll go to board members in a moment here, so.
Okay. So for item number three, you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 21.15 of the Sacramento County Code to change the method and presentation of the capital improvement plans to be consistent with current practice and to improve the process. You waive reading on this on October 25th. For item 18, you're introducing two ordinances. The first one is to introduce an ordinance repealing and reenacting county building codes contained in Chapters 16.02, 04, 10, 20, 22, 23, 24, 28, 32, 34, 36, 37, 38, 39, 90, and adding 16.41, 42, and 43, and deleting 16.08 and 4.58. You're also introducing an ordinance repealing and reenacting county fire prevention code contained in Chapter 17.04. You will waive reading on this and continue it to November 15th for adoption. For item 21, I just want to make a note on the record that we have a revised title for contract number 4490. This is the curb gutter and sidewalk replacement project 2022, a ward of bid to FBD Vanguard Construction Incorporated. And the environmental document on this was a categorical exemption. And then for item 25, you're adopting an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending sections, amending sections of Chapter 3.42 relating to administration fees for the employment of off-duty sheriff deputies. And you waive reading on this on October 25th. And that concludes my notes for this morning.
Okay, thank you. Important to point out on item 21, because that actually was the protestant that was in there.
And also, for the record, the board letter was correct. It was just an oversight in the title, and it was corrected yesterday.
All right, thanks, Flo. Okay, let me go to colleagues. Siraz Frost, any items? Siraz Serna? Siraz or Desmond? Okay. I just wanted to make some comments on a couple items, so I could. So item four, if you could.
Oh, yeah. Okay, item four, approve the American Rescue Plan Act district-directed funding allocations for District 5. Adopt resolutions authorizing agreements associated with the implementation of approved funding allocations.
Okay. And I just wanted to express my appreciation to all the folks that have worked on this. I know a number of departments are involved, and certainly, and I commented in my briefing yesterday, appreciation to folks both in the Finance Department, but also departments that will administer the contracts. There's a variety, obviously, of organizations and good projects that are being funded through this particular item. And we've had others in the past, and we'll see some more in the future. But I want to just acknowledge the work of staff, because, again, it isn't without a great deal of dedication to making sure that things are in place that you can bring to this board. And so I want to thank Rebecca Sloan in my office, but also folks, without calling them out by name, that will be working on this, because this is kind of the beginning, I guess, in the sense that some of these will have to be administered. But appreciate that very much. Thank you for your leadership, too. And if I could, just item 18, you read it into the record, but you don't need to read back into the record. You just called a general item, and I must want to offer a couple of comments.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I forgot already what it was. Oh, yes, the introduction of all of those ordinances for the county building code and the fire prevention code.
I just wanted to note, and again, I had a chance to talk with our chief building inspector. I know last week, in our session, we talked about some of the efficiencies, but also areas where we were working with both building and planning and other related departments on things that would certainly reflect well on folks that would be applying to the county, but also, I think, ways that we would administer not just a building code, but a variety of other aspects of permits. And one of the things that I found very notable here, and I wanted to just call it out, because I know in years past, we've had conversations before this board that have been a little tense at times regarding the application of penalties and administrative penalties in particular. And one of the things that has, for a long, long time, troubled me, because, again, I think it was, you know, very punitive. It was argued from other quarters that it was the way to make sure that folks that didn't, you know, obey the rules or play by the rules or were ignorant of the rules, that you brought them into compliance, and they didn't benefit by doing work that was unpermitted. But, and it was always characterized, it was, you know, the cost of the permits plus, you know, a doubling of the fees, but it actually was three times. And it made it very difficult, because oftentimes, you'd see folks that were in the permit process that might have, again, made choices in some, but out of ignorance, for some, maybe intentional. But it was interesting. Last evening, I was going through some paperwork in my office, and I got a report in 2019 that had a list of all the administrative penalties that were pending at the time, going back both building inspection and code enforcement. And some of those were tens of thousands of dollars, and mostly paper fees. You know, some obviously had hard costs for enforcement activities and so forth. But I think we're going in the right direction here, that, you know, basically to try to get compliance in a way that recognizes people, you know, you know, didn't, you know, follow the rules, but also doesn't make it so punitive, where people just throw up their hands and walk away. And then we go into a process that requires legal counsel, and we get liens against property and so forth. I think the approach here, we want, obviously, to facilitate, you know, people getting permits for work that requires that, but also if they, you know, for whatever reason, don't do that, to not just make it so punitive. And I want to say, I think that's a step in the right direction. It still will, you know, allow this county to enforce, you know, the codes. They're there for health and safety reasons. But I wanted to say, I think it's a positive move, Ann, and hopefully, we will see more compliance. And again, without sharing some of the stories that have certainly come to my attention over the years, that were just extreme, where we were, you know, 50, 60, 70, $80,000 in administrative penalties, and most of that were not hard costs, they were soft costs. They were just accumulated over time. You know, the value of the work was, might even have been less than what we were putting forth as penalties. Again, I just think there's a number of things here that reflect consistency with state codes, but also move in a direction, not unlike what we talked about, you know, last Wednesday in our retreat. And so I want to compliment our staff, and hopefully, again, we'll be able to, you know, maintain the health and safety that's within our realm of responsibility, but also do in a way that doesn't put people into, you know, situations that are just untenable. And I met a lot, I always say, I met a lot of resistance as a supervisor with some of those cases in the district that I represent, and found it very difficult because folks that were leading in various departments and even at the county executive level at the time, were not moved that we should do anything differently than the way we were doing it. But I think this moves in the right direction, so I want to just point that out. Thanks. That's all, comments I had, and-
And we do not, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, so we have, anyone here, there's, you know, it's a pretty sparse audience this morning. Anyone here wish to address any items that are on the agenda on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, we have none on the phone, so it's up to the board members. Any other comments? If not, a motion being ordered.
We have approval of our consent.
Okay. All right, it's moved to second to approve the consent calendar, and read into record by the clerk, noted on the ordinance introductions and the adoption, so, and the correction. All right, nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Let the record reflect that Supervisor Kennedy is not present today.
All right, very good. Okay. All right, thank you. Good to our next items, then.
Item 36 is a presentation by the Sacramento Area Council of Governments on the Blueprint Project.
Okay. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Chair Natoli, members of the board. My name is Casey Lazon, and I am the Deputy Executive Director at the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Thank you for the time today to talk with you about an upcoming planning process, a regional conversation that we would really love to have your engagement in and your help in engaging as many of your constituents and residents as possible. First, briefly, so this is an information presentation, and it's also an invitation. First, briefly, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments is a federally and state-designated metropolitan planning organization, and it is also a voluntary association of all of the 22 cities and six counties in the Sacramento region. So of course, the Sacramento County is well-represented on the SAICOG Board with Supervisors Kennedy, Desmond, and Frost. This is one of, it's probably, is the only local, or it's the only government entity where you have every single city and county coming together around a table at least once a month. And at that table, those local governments will discuss and take on issues that are bigger than one jurisdiction can solve. This is where long-range, you know, looking out 20-plus years, transportation growth, housing, air quality, climate planning occurs. There's also investment that SAICOG undertakes, really investing in transportation, and most recently, investing in housing planning and investing in catalyzing and field development. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But I just wanted to make sure, to give a brief orientation in part for everyone who's listening.
Thanks, Casey.
What I'm here to invite you to today is to participate in the update of our Long Range Transportation Plan. It is called the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. That is a mouthful. We've called it for a long time. We want to simplify that. We're calling it the Blueprint. This is in homage, really, to the original blueprint visioning exercise that the entire region went through 20 years ago now. This was a voluntary effort. The cities and counties of the region saw that this continued to be a fast-growing region and wanted to really slow down, think about how can we accommodate all of the population growth, all of the economic growth that we should want, because we want to be a growing region, not a dying region, but accommodating in a way that could maintain and even improve quality of life over time. And so with that effort, we really want to bring that spirit forward, and that's why it's called the Blueprint. So what, a few things. What is the Blueprint? It's a long-range plan. It is both a requirement under federal and state law that SAICOG has to develop. That is a plan for growth, for development, for transportation in particular. So how to accommodate growth into the future with the transportation system, and what kinds of transportation investments will be needed. And it has to meet a host of different performance standards and goals. So we have to demonstrate how, if we're growing and investing in transportation to accommodate growth, how we can do that while reducing greenhouse gas emissions, how we can do that while improving air quality, how we can do that while managing congestion, improving mobility for residents. So there's a host of requirements. And then, and at the end of the day, when this plan is adopted, any local or regional transportation project that an agency wants to undertake and wants to pursue federal or state funding for, that project has to be included in that plan. So it is a requirement in that regard. It's also just a really, it's the right thing to do in a region where people live their lives and business, you know, does its daily business across jurisdictional boundaries. Every city and county has a general plan, has plans for how they want to grow over time, and this is a really great opportunity for cities and counties to come together to coordinate how do we best maintain and build up our communities in a way that really can benefit our residents and business. So in a nutshell, it's not a general plan in that sense. It's trying to coordinate those. It's also not a stapling exercise or a wish list. So it's really a plan that for, you know, looking 30 years out, has to be strategic and financially constrained. It's a big thing, though, so I want to use a different analogy to help explain what this plan is. So let's take it down to an individual level. If you have a home, right, and over time, that home ages, and the home gets a leak in the roof, and so you need to repair that. And at the same time, your family is growing, and so you need to find more space, and so you've got to add a room onto the home. But you're working with a constrained budget. The challenge you have before you, right, is how do I repair this roof? How do I, you know, fix or add on to my home to accommodate my needs, my family's needs, within that budget? And so how do you phase and sequence all of that out? So you take that individual experience, and you just expand it out to the region, and that's what we're doing across all of our local governments.
So you fixed the leaky roof by adding a room?
I'm sorry.
I said you fixed the leaky roof by adding a room.
You know, hey, you know, that could be, that very well could be. This is a good, that's a good brainstorm. And that's exactly the kind of conversation we want to be able to have. So the SAICOG Board, in kicking off this blueprint update, they adopted a triple bottom-line framework for the plan, meaning for this plan for transportation and housing and growth and, you know, trying to help with climate change, we want to make investments. And so we want this plan to be grounded in the goals of equity, economy, and environment. So how can we make investments in the future to benefit all of our residents, particularly those who have been hurt by government decisions in the past? How can we do this in a way that can really bolster and support our economy for everyone? And how can we do this in a way so that our environment continues to be healthy, clean, and really that we can be here for generations? All of those goals being equal goals. It's a tall challenge that is being undertaken. And so what might that look like when we talk about transportation? Which is, when we talk about that, it's surface transportation, it's, you know, roadways, transit, sidewalks, bikeways, it's all of those things. Well, a triple bottom line of transportation investments that's trying to advance the equity and an economy and the environment, it might mean that we're looking at where do we have roadways or other infrastructure that's really in a state of disrepair, and that needs to be invested in first. It might mean that we have areas within our communities where there's just a history of traffic accidents, and we need to invest in those first. It might mean that we have areas or people in our community who just really are struggling with mobility options, and we need to help them. It could be all of those things. The point is, we want to have this conversation, again, as I said, regionally in your community, to understand what that looks like and to bring that into developing policies and strategies in this blueprint.
Casey, before you leave that slide, because one of the things that, and again, I've talked to James, and you've been in enough sessions, you've heard me talk about it as well, is that, talk about deteriorated conditions, the deteriorated conditions of our rural roads. And you're, you know, you have four slides up there, but you don't show a rural setting. And I'll give you just a chance to respond, but I guess my point being made is that with all the programs that are certainly under the umbrella of what SAICOG brings through from the federal and state sources, that continues to be a really, I think, challenging. And we've got folks, the next presentation's our Crop and Livestock Report, and you've got some folks who live in some of those rural areas, and are farmers and business people and ranchers. And again, when I look at the sixth county, SAICOG region, and I, you know, see, you know, certainly, they have very expansive rural settings, too. But in this county, you know, over half a billion dollars is generated in our farm economy, and yet we've got roads that now, not just because of the, you know, the farm-to-market or local traffic, that are serving as, you know, through routes because of our technology now. And this morning, probably a good example, you see where accidents occurred, so people take side streets or side roads, and continues to really challenge certainly Sacramento County. And we've made significant investment using about $62 million in general fund dollars in the last, you know, three budget cycles to, you know, match with whatever comes through the SAICOG processes, through other tax revenues that are, you know, siloed for roads and certainly road projects, a variety. And again, your, I think, you know, collage up there shows, you know, areas where they're more heavily populated. But the rural roads do not compete very well. And when I think about the delta in particular, where you have miles and miles of levee roads, you have, you know, soils that, you know, both support the road, but also the structure keeps the, you know, holds the water back. And so I guess, you know, as you go through this, and, you know, you don't need to respond, or you're welcome to, that continues to be a critical aspect. I think that's part of what this county will continue to advocate for. And because, you know, we're not winning the battle in the rural areas of this county, and it's a variety of reasons. The more through traffic, we're finding more truck traffic coming through neighborhoods or rural community neighborhoods, and certainly more volume of commuters and others that are finding other ways to get around because of congestion that is in some of our mainstream arteries. And so I just, I think if you're going to reflect this, as you go about the conversation, and again, I won't be here for the part of it, but I was here for the original blueprint and know, you know, the work that SAICOG led, but also some of the tensions that went into that whole process at the time. I do think that needs to remain a focus, and I would be surprised, maybe other counties don't see it as being the bigger need in some of the more rural counties. I can tell you, in this county, it's a critical need and one that needs to continue to be reflected in the conversations that SAICOG has, that certainly this board has, and that, you know, other leaders, state and national, when we look to the infrastructure system as it relates to rural roads, because I can tell you, we are losing, losing that battle, even with our best efforts. And, you know, the investment will be significant. It's going to be in the order of magnitude, I'm sure, hundreds of millions of dollars of backlog. So anyway, I'll let you, you know, if you want to respond. Again, you've heard it from me before.
My response, Chair Natoli, is thank you. I appreciate you raising that, and it is a very fair critique, even of our imaging. And so that, that feedback is actually really helpful, so that we can really make this plan something that reflects the priorities of all of, all of the parts of the region. And I just want to affirm that while we have a very large region, and it is a 2.5 million-person region, but like 80% of the land is rural, it's working land. And so, thank you very much.
Good, thanks, Casey.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Siraz, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. One thing that you're probably unaccustomed to is here at the Board of Supervisors, we don't hesitate to interrupt during the middle of a presentation, Casey. At SAICOG, you're used to waiting until the end, so I'm just going to take advantage and piggyback off, off the chair. First of all, I agree 100% with the chair, and, you know, I've expressed some sentiments during the course of SAICOG Board meetings, but have not, not done it, you know, in this, kind of in this forum, talking to you. And just want to reiterate the chair's comments, certainly. And I think there's a, there's an inclination to focus on rural, not think of Sacramento County as having these big rural communities. You know, there's a focus on some of these other outlying counties in the SAICOG area. And so I think it's very important that he brought these comments up to you. And these roads in Sacramento County are, not only are they used a lot more, they're a heck of a lot older than some of the rural roads in some of these areas. And I think also, just, I love the triple bottom-line approach. I mean, I think it's, you've heard me say this at SAICOG so many times, you know, equity, economy, environment. But really, when you're looking at inequities, you need look no further than a lot of the unincorporated areas in Sacramento counties. These are some of the oldest, again, some of the oldest areas in the SAICOG region, some of the most, some of the biggest inequities have happened in some of these unincorporated communities. And I think, you know, out of 2.5 million people in the SAICOG area, unincorporated Sacramento County is 600,000 people. County is 600,000 people. So I'm certainly committed to really taking advantage of that triple bottom line to try to influence a lot more investment from SECOC, a lot more attention, and not only the rural areas, but in the other unincorporated areas, particularly, you know, some of the environmental justice communities that have really suffered from these inequities. And so I really hope that through this blueprint process and other great initiatives of SECOCs, we can make up for some of these inequities, and, but just, I love that you're here today, and I look forward to the rest of your presentation. Thank you.
This is great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Let's see, let's go, let's talk about how we're setting up for this, for really a continuation of the conversation that we're just starting here. Our plan moving forward is to, again, as I said, have a regional conversation, and we want to start that with knowing that we have, are doing a long-range plan, looking out to the year 2050. We want to develop, we're calling them three future pathways. So this is looking at what is the growth, the population, the housing needed for that population, and the jobs that we are expecting to see by the year 2050, and trying to project that out onto the ground into the future in very distinct ways to really understand what are the implications of different ways of growing into the future. And so what I mean by that is, here's the basics to set it up. This is a map of the Sacramento region, and the dark blue areas are the existing developed footprint. So this is where you have existing, you know, communities built up. The light blue areas are where local plans say these are expansion areas. So there may not be any development there, or there may be a little bit, but they're ultimately areas where local policies say we want to grow into these areas. So the challenge is, when you add that all up, that's a lot of room to accommodate growth, but it is accommodating growth that's going to probably be well beyond the year of 2050. And so we're looking at how do we sequence and phase over time? So the first pathway is looking at if we were to accommodate 40% of our projected growth into the existing urban areas, and then 60% of it through expanding those areas. And when I say urban, I should say, that's not to say incorporated or unincorporated, right? That just means that places that are built up to urban standards. The second pathway is looking at 67%, or two-thirds, of growth being accommodated within existing urban areas, and then the balance of that through expansion. And then the third is looking at what if 90% of the growth was accommodated in existing urban areas, and then the balance through expansion? Now, that is a regional number, meaning that across the region, that's going to look very different, you know, by any jurisdiction. The point is, when you do this to look at very disparate development patterns, that means you have very, you have different transportation investments to ensure that there's mobility in those different development patterns, and there's different implications for, for the environment, for the economy, and equity. So what are the implications for people's mobility? They're just their basic ability to get to jobs, to work, to school, the implications for public health, for climate change, for air quality, for agricultural land, for housing choice. There's a number of different things that we will be measuring, and then we want to translate that into, into statements of values, so that we can go out and have conversations about all of this. And this is where one of my first, like, very direct invitations comes to you, which is, we are planning to do a number of workshops next year. We want these to be, they're going to be pop-up workshops, we want to go to places where people are already gathering, and so we want to take this information that we create, translate it into something that really is relatable to a regular person who doesn't live in this world all the time, to take their input. And so we would love to know, in your communities, what are events, as I said, gatherings that people are already having where we could bring this there? We would love to know what community-based organizations that are in your community, particularly working with hard-to-reach groups, hard-to-reach constituencies, so that we can work with them and work with you to try to tailor this engagement so that they can provide their input. And then in addition to yourselves, any other community leaders who we might be contacting with, so that, again, we can get the word out and help to bring, bring this conversation to as many parts of your community as possible. That work is going to be happening, as I said, into 2023. We have a targeted adoption in 2024. I will note, our SECOC board is meeting this Thursday, and they do have on their agenda a potential extension of the schedule, which might take this into 2025. That's really to make sure that there is time for the community engagement and the partner engagement with cities and counties and all of our transportation agency partners, enough time to really do this well. So that's my asterisk on this 2024 adoption. What happens after adoption, before I go there, what happens after adoption is, we adopt this plan, and then we implement it. And there's a couple ways that this gets implemented. One, cities and counties like yourselves, you're implementing your general plans, your capital improvement programs, and that is implementation of the blueprint. The other way that you're implementing it is through SECOC's projects and programs. And what I'm going to show you here in the next few slides is just some examples of implementation of a long-range plan, because I think it really helps for people to just understand what is the whole point of this, this effort in the first place.
Casey, who was it, Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Casey, for the presentation thus far. Quick question about trying to get to a preferred pathway. So if I understand you correctly, based on the, one of your previous slides, there's kind of these different scenarios in terms of how much growth gets accommodated in the existing urban suburban footprint versus new greenfield growth. So is there an expectation that the areas for expansion will necessarily reflect the blueprint results from 20 years ago? Is that the starting, is that the base, baseline?
I see. There, that's a really good question. It's not the expectation. In fact, I should have said, maybe this is a good setup, and we can see if it's answering your question, or if it needs more clarification. The preferred pathway that we come to will not necessarily be pathway one, two, or three. Those pathways are being used to try to, you know, get some input on what is important, what's valuable. The ultimate pathway might look different than that. It might have elements of each of them. It may or may not look like the blueprint from 2004. That is what the process of going through this will help to determine. We will be providing information about what all of these different pathways do as far as, you know, various, as I said, performance targets that we are required to measure and to try to make progress on. But that will also be provided as we're developing a preferred pathway.
The reason I ask the question is that I think there's potential for there to be difficulty in reconciling some of the results from the past blueprint effort and this. And I'll give you an example. In Sacramento County, in the district I represent, you'll recall, from the 2004 blueprint, there was a map, but there were also, you know, several different, I forgot what we're calling them, priorities, I guess, principles. And, you know, if you looked at the map and you understood the principles, it kind of gives local government, you know, probably the best likelihood of where growth may be directed. As you rightly mentioned earlier, that, you know, this is not a general planning exercise, but the, that map and those principles over the last 20 years have certainly influenced where we grow. In the first district, one of the examples is the area north of Elkhorn, and, which is a fairly sizable area in terms of acreage and growth potential. And that has since been one of the signals from that exercise 20 years ago to landowners, investors, and local government to say, well, okay, you know, there was a very detailed regional effort to understand where we're, where we're going to grow over the next several decades 20 years ago. That's influenced since then, a lot of investment, time, energy, and capital to explore the potential in those growth areas. But if you were in this proposal to come back and say, well, now we think the area north of Elkhorn shouldn't grow, because, you know, we need to, you know, whatever it is, reduce VMT, or, you know, there could be a whole host of things that people and agencies might suggest in terms of why we not grow that way. So I just, I feel like this, if it's not, if the, if the different opportunities or alternatives for these, you know, hybrid pathways, don't acknowledge that. I just think that you might have a lot of your board members scratching their heads at the end of it, going, well, what about 20 years ago? And wasn't that supposed to be the signal for how and where we should grow? So I just wanted to put that out there, because it's, it already makes me a little itchy.
I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you Supervisor Serna for that. I take that as we need to be thoughtful about communicating what these pathways are and what they represent, and I will take that back to our team so that we are able to do that. I do want to acknowledge, because I think this, take advantage of that question, to say that this, this plan doesn't, it has an endpoint, because we have to, per our requirements, have an endpoint to plan two. However, it doesn't suggest that, that 2050 is the end of the region, or like, time stops after that. And so it's really, I think, important to think of this blueprint as, it is a living plan. We will update it, we do update it every four years. And it is very much a sequencing and a phasing plan. So the, the big question, the hard question that will be in front of, in you, in front of you, in front of our SECOC board, is with the resources that we are working with, with the goals that we're trying to achieve, where are we going to put those limited resources back to the house analogy? So thank you very much.
Thanks, Casey.
Okay, moving on to some examples of implementation. This, I'm going to run through these again to just try to illustrate what happens after the plan gets adopted. So this program is a brand-new one out of our last regional funding program. SECOC runs a program, a grant program, every two years for all of the local agencies and transportation agencies in the region. What came out of that was the Engage and Power Implement Grant Program. That was really inspired by the SECOC board's discussions and efforts to try to figure out how SECOC, as a government agency, can help advance racial equity, part of the E in the triple bottom line, really to try to reduce racial disparities that are across health, housing, transportation, a number of different indicators. And so the Engage and Power Implement Program that is being developed will fund local governments to work in partnership with community-based organizations to co-create projects that are solutions to needs that the community has identified. The timing of this is really, we think, very good, because at the state and federal levels, there are a number of grant programs for transportation projects to actually construct, and they are looking for projects that have been co-created, that have had equitable engagement with communities. And so what we hope to do with this program is to help local agencies like Sacramento County create a pipeline of projects that could compete well for that funding. Another implementation program we have, I'd mentioned earlier, catalyzing infill. This is the Green Means Go program. Sacramento County has actually already benefited from one of the first tranches of funding. We're very excited about that. This program is the result of all of the cities and counties in the Sacramento region advocating over three years at the state legislature to fill in a funding gap that we identified through our last long-range plan to try to catalyze infill housing development in areas where, that are, what we say, low, low VMT or green areas, where places where people can take shorter trips, walk or bike, or take transit. And so this funding program pays for the non-transportation side of infrastructure in these areas, so upgrading sewer, water, fixing drainage, so that local plans can be realized. Another of our implementing programs, this one, again, coming out of the last, last long-range plan, is the Mega Region Working Group, where the three regions in the Northern California mega region, so that's SECOC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission in the Bay Area, and the San Joaquin Council of Governments have representatives from each of their boards, meeting about quarterly, to determine where there is, where there is shared advocacy on projects, on transportation projects and funding, so that we can advance those transportation projects that really are beneficial to all three of our regions, because our economies and our people are just growing more connected over time. And so this, this just shows a map of the 12 projects that were identified, four of them in the Sacramento region, I will just call out briefly. The blue line is, represents the Yolo I-80 Managed Lanes Project. The pink line represents the I-5 Managed Lanes Project. The green line represents the Sacramento to Roseville Third Track of the Capitol Corridor. And then the orange line is an extension of Passenger Rail, that's the Ace, Ultimont Corridor Express and San Joaquin service. Another implementation out of our last plan is the Regional Trails Plan. This is, that the SECOC board just adopted this summer. This is the vision that every person could roll or walk from wherever they are, their home, and be able to get all over the region. It's a really exciting project that we had all of your local agencies participating in, and we now are on the phase of needing to implement that. To Chair Natoli, your comments about rural communities, I wanted to just stop on this, this effort. This is the prosperity strategy that SECOC undertook with partners. You can see the organizations listed there at the bottom, our economic development partners. This is really to try to figure out how, across of these different sectors, we can all support the, the growth of our key, really, primary sectors in this region, so food and agriculture, health and life sciences, and innovative mobility. And then lastly, another program that really is ongoing, it's been going for a few years now, it's our Youth Leadership Academy. This is an ongoing engagement every year. We just, we're about to start our next cohort. We take high school students from all around the region, teach them about regional planning, local planning, how to get civically engaged, in the hopes that they will continue that engagement in their communities, because ultimately, the long-range planning and investing that we do at SECOC really is not so much for us sitting here, but it's really for them. And so it's giving them, helping them to have the tools to continue to have that voice. And with that, I will stop and continue to take any questions you have.
Great. Thanks, Casey. Any other board members? Supervisor Dizem?
Just a comment. Thank you again, Casey, for being here. This is just, it's great, it's exciting, all the things that SECOC is doing. I was planning to join, I don't know, you or whomever, at a Green Means Go presentation, I think, up in North Iowa's Faux Farms area, but my, I won't be able to make it, unfortunately, but my staff will be there. And just really appreciate the opportunities to be included in any outreach and engagement, certainly in, you know, the district that I represent in Sacramento County. But thank you very much for your efforts and for being here today.
Any other board members? If not, I would just echo that, thank you, Casey, for your ongoing efforts. I know you've been with the SECOC team for, you know, several years, and appreciate your work. And again, there's a lot of opportunity for folks to weigh in, and I think the outreach will be very important, certainly to the key leadership, but also to the community. So again, thank you for being here today.
Great. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, this is a receive and file, and more information to come, so. All right, with that, do we have any public commenters on this item?
We do not.
Okay. All right, then that'll take us to our next item, then, item 37.
Item 37 is the Sacramento County 2021 Crop and Livestock Report Presentation.
Great, we have our Agricultural Commissioner and some of our agricultural leaders in the audience here today, so I'm going to turn to Chris Flores. Chris, good morning.
While they're loading the presentation.
Okay.
All right, good morning, Chair Natoli, members of the board. Chris Flores, Sacramento County's Agricultural Commissioner. I'm here this morning to present to you the 2021 Sacramento County Crop and Livestock Report. As you know, every year, ag departments around the state collect data from ag producers and growers, including types and amounts of crops and commodities produced, acres harvested, and gross production values. We then present this information to the California Secretary of Agriculture and to our Boards of Supervisors. Due to the popularity of last year's calendar format, we are presenting our 2021 crop statistics within the 2023 calendar, creating a report that is not only interesting, but useful on a day-to-day basis. In today's presentation, I will be highlighting some of our crop and livestock In today's presentation, I will be highlighting some of our crop and livestock statistics from 2021, as well as introducing you to some of the people in Sacramento County who live and breathe agriculture on a day-to-day basis. Mixed among the report pages, you will find photos and information about these individuals. On our Certified Farmers Market page, you will find a QR code, which will bring you to a quick little video link about Mary Yang. She's one of our certified producers in Sacramento. This year's report is in honor of those who are behind the statistics. And we greatly appreciate their contributions to the production and distribution of our food and fiber. So first, I would like to begin with our crop statistics. In 2021, our gross production value in Sacramento County was over $568 million. This value tops our 2020 value by over $113 million and is the county's highest gross production value to date. Fruit and nut crops contributed to over 50% of this total value. Field crops were about 14 and 1/2% of the total value, and so on.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chair. Sergeant, go ahead.
Chris, going back to that slide, if I heard you correctly, there was a, a year-to-year increase of about over $113 million in value?
Correct.
Have we seen that kind of year-to-year jump in value before?
I don't know.
That seems like a pretty extraordinary figure.
But it was, yeah. But we're comparing 2020 values during our pandemic to 2021, kind of coming out of that. And I think that had something to do with it.
I'm sure you'll probably get to it in the, in the furtherance of your presentation. But is some of that attributable to crop rotation? So just same amount of acreage or grow, more acreage, but a higher value crop being, being produced?
I think there were many factors, one of them being wine grapes. Wine grapes had a really big jump in production value in 2021, as well as our cherries. You know, some of the, some of, you know, based on weather conditions, right? They had really good seasons. And so I think combined, we had some, most of the crops had increases in value in 2021. Which is unusual.
Good question.
So we'll go into our top 10, as I usually highlight. And as I mentioned, so wine grapes were, once again, Sacramento County's highest-valued commodity at over $204 million. This was a 24% increase over the 2020 value. And I, I read that supply issues in 2020 caused by the pandemic and then also wildfire smoke may have caused the demand for wine grapes in 2021 to increase. And that makes sense. Our number two highest-valued commodity is dairy or milk, market milk. Market milk was over $66 million in value.
Chris, can I just ask you on that? Have we seen any additional dairies come forward? I know we were shrinking and we were down to less than two dozen dairies still remaining in the county. So have you seen that stabilize? Have you, has there been any, any trending? Because again.
Yeah, it seems to be just a, a steady decline is what I'm seeing. Yeah.
And by your count, how many dairies, operating dairies in the county?
I know last year we had, we were at 15, and I, I don't have the number this year, but.
At, at one time, dairy was number one for a lot, a lot of years. And combination of factors, I'm sure.
A lot of that, yeah. A lot of that has to, has contributed to ongoing regulations that they're faced with every year.
Water, water, air, water and air regulations, manure management.
Urban encroachment.
Yeah, some of that too.
So, yeah, Pears had a really good year in 2021, and they grossed over $45 million. They, they experienced a 42% increase in their gross production value over the previous year and a 47% increase in yield. So they, they just blossomed that year. It was a really good year for Pears.
And acreages stayed pretty much the same or?
Yes. But it was the per acre yield that really just tripled. So the, the quantity and production value.
Lot more pear cider.
What's that?
Lot more pear cider.
Our fourth highest valued commodity was actually the nursery, nursery industry. They saw an increase of 22%. Poultry was valued at 26 million. They were one of the, one of the commodities that actually saw a decrease in 2021.
But that due to, we didn't have an outbreak of the avian.
We did not.
Yeah, avian flu. We were fortunate.
Yeah. But so I'm not sure what that was contributed to. Cherries increased in value by 63%, over 20 million. They actually tripled in yield as well. So they had a very good weather year. Aquaculture is Sacramento County's seventh highest-valued commodity at over 18 million. Alfalfa hay was eighth. Field corn made the top 10 in 2021 at 16 million. And then cattle and calves, number 10 at 15 million. So just overall, our, our field crop value was over $82 million. Saw an increase in our highest-valued field crops included alfalfa hay, field corn and rice. The overall fruit and nut value increased by 30%. And as I mentioned, wine grapes contributed to that, pears, cherries, and then almonds. Our vegetable crops increased in value by 41%, and that was largely due to the increase in value of processing tomatoes in 2021. As previously, previously mentioned, our dairy production value was over 66 million, an increase of 4%. Our livestock value was up 14%. Our poultry value, which includes chicken and turkey production, was valued at over 26 million. Honey and pollination values decreased by 22% to 590 million. Aquaculture increased by 16%. Nursery stock increased by 22%. And seed crops were valued at almost 3 million, a 56% increase.
Chris, before you leave that, so on the apiary with the, the honeys and the pollination, are we still very challenged with the collapse of the colonies? You know, what's, you know, what's the status of, certainly not just the bee population, but obviously the beekeepers and those that, you know, that's key to, obviously, to number of the other production outputs that are, you know, in your report.
You know, I don't, I don't know why this number was decreased. That was based on what was reported to us by our beekeepers. They're actually very good at reporting to us their statistics.
It's really kind of under valuation. I don't, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how to measure it, but.
Yeah. I mean, we, we, year to year, go with what they, what they report to us as far as their, what they earned. And, and that was what we received in 2021. I don't, we did not see a decrease in almond acreage necessarily. Our almond acreage seems to be increasing slightly. Yeah. So I don't have a, a clear answer for you there. Sorry.
It's okay.
So while the numbers are important, and I am statutorily required to provide them to the California Secretary of Agriculture, this is an annual opportunity to be reminded of the importance of agriculture to our county and to all others who benefit from it. As previously mentioned, representing the larger ag industry in the county are some very gracious individuals, standing next to me here, who gave us permission to highlight them in this year's report. So I'm going to start with Tyler Stowers. Tyler is a farm manager for Soilborne Farms, a 55-acre nonprofit organization that promotes urban agriculture, sustainable farming, and healthy food education. It's located in Rancho Cordova along the American River. Tyler was introduced to farming in 2011 through an apprenticeship program and has worked for Soilborne Farms for the past seven years. He grew up in Roseville and earned a degree at UC Berkeley in philosophy. His ultimate goal is to be a, make a positive impact on the community and world through sustainable ag. He mentioned that he could see himself as an educator, teaching younger generations. And Tyler is the proud father of two twin sons, or twin, twin, two-year-old twins, sorry. I don't know if they're sons. Monica Ramirez is a dock leader for Averti Growers. That used to be Village Nurseries off of Bradshaw.
Off of Bradshaw.
So that's a production nursery in Sacramento. She began her career at the nursery nine years ago. Her main responsibilities include loading and unloading orders of nursery stock and supervising the dock crew. Her favorite part of her job is driving the forklift and working with her colleagues. Monica is originally from Jalisco, Mexico, and came to the United States in 2012. She originally heard about employment opportunities at Averti Growers, Growers through friends. During our discussion with her, she mentioned that she misses home from time to time, but she's, she loves California for the opportunities that it has provided her. Monica is the hard-working mother of three children, two daughters and a son. And I heard she had surgery last year, so she couldn't be, or last week, so she couldn't be here. So Juan Pablo Gonzalez is the safety manager for K-Dix Incorporated. K-Dix is a fourth-generation agricultural service in the Delta that oversees the farming of approximately 1,600 acres of pears and 2,000 acres of cherries. Juan started working for K-Dix approximately five years ago when his father-in-law urged him to come to the United States. He was hired as a fruit picker, but was quickly recognized by his supervisor, Alex Wilson, as a leader and problem solver. Alex created a supervisory position for Juan to bridge the gap between the field and the office. For the past two years, Juan has supervised the pruning and picking crews to ensure all safety measures are being followed and has assisted with special projects, including a trip to Jacksonville, Florida, to help streamline the assembly of a new company product. And Juan can't be here today because he is in Mexico. So representing our farmers market and direct marketing operations, Dan Best is the owner and operator of Certified Farmers Markets of Sacramento. Dan's wife Renee and his daughter Danielle assist him with the business. Dan opened his first markets in 1980 with the purpose of providing a direct marketing venue for small family farms who would in turn provide locally-produced, healthy food to urban residents. As the owner-operator of CFMs, some of Dan's responsibilities include marketing, keeping growers apprised of regulatory changes, maintaining stall occupancy, and maintaining a safe and enjoyable market environment. Although the pandemic created new challenges for farmers markets, such as keeping up with Centers for Disease Control Guidelines in regards to safety requirements, it also highlighted the importance of Certified Farmers Markets and the essential role they play between local ag producers and our communities. Dan foresees the need to continue to operate his markets and provide to the community for years to come. When interviewing Dan, his final comment was, "We don't run markets, we live them."
Yes, for 40 years. Yeah, amazing.
It's a long time. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Juan Carlos Madrigal. And Carlos, standing next to me here, works for Green and Hemley. Green and Hemley is a fifth and sixth-generation-run family farm located in Cortland along the Sacramento River. They grow pears, apples, and cherries with over 160 acres in organic production. Juan began his career with Green and Hemley in 2010 as a forklift driver. Four years later, he was offered the position of shed supervisor. Juan is responsible for fruit grading and labeling, supervising the crew, and running and maintaining the machinery in the packing sheds. During the off-season, you may find him in an orchard, driving a tractor and assisting with orchard maintenance. Juan's favorite part of his job is working with the crew. He loves his people. He gets to know them, especially the employees who return year after year. He works right along with them and is proud of what they produce. When talking to people about what he does for a living, he says it with pride, "I work in agriculture."
Great. I know you're going to cover some other folks. I just want to say that if my colleagues have never had the opportunity to visit or work in a packing shed, it's a, you know, it's a, you know, seasonal activity. But I've had the chance, and I know Virginia Shabra, who is part of the Green and Hemley family, you know, would, I'm sure, be welcome, folks come down and see, because it is a, talk about beehive of activity. It's just amazing, the, the belts and the amount of fruit. But then all the people that are picking, I mean, sorting and packing and so forth. And obviously, that's Juan's job is to oversee that as one of the supervisors. But it is just, it is, it's amazing activity. And again, if you haven't had a chance, certainly during the season, you know, it would be a good opportunity to visit the Delta and, but also to see, you know, how all that comes together, obviously, from the, you know, tree to the, to the, you know, final finished product that's graded and, you know, and then sorted and separated and shipped or, or cold-stored. But at any rate, it's just, I know, I, I've had the opportunity in years past, and it's just amazing, all of folks that are working. And, you know, and you got the mechanical part of it, then you got the human element, and then you got all the other aspects of, that go into it. But they're good. Congratulations to you, Juan, and to all the folks. I know we're going to recognize Miguel here in just a moment as well. But I'm giving you an opportunity, when Chris has done either one of you, if you'd like to offer some comments too, that'd be fine too. So, okay.
I told him they wouldn't be put on the spot.
It's an opportunity. You don't have to say, say a word if you don't want to. But this is, you're on television, though. I'll just tell you that, so.
Yeah, he found that out at the last minute, too.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and I was thinking about keeping that machinery going when everything is rolling. It's got to be a tough job, so. And lastly, I'd like to introduce Miguel Hernandez, or Miggy, right here. Miggy is the ranch manager for Silva Farms. And Gary Silva Jr. is also here with us today.
Morning, Gary.
It's a third-generation, family-owned and operated ranch in Harold. Miggy began working in Silva Farms about 12 years ago and has been the ranch manager for five years. And he says he loves working for Silva Farms. He works nine to 10 hours a day irrigating crops, caring for the livestock, and managing issues that arise. His favorite part of the job is working with the cows. He is responsible for their feeding, branding, medication, and moving them from one area of the ranch to the other. Miggy graduated from high school in Mexico and has been attending night school in Galt for the past three years. His short-term goal is to become increasingly fluent in English and to take the U.S. Citizenship Exam. His long-term goal is to own his own ranch and cattle. When he's not working, Miggy loves spending time with his wife, son, and daughter.
Congratulations, Miggy. I've known Gary for a long, long time, so he and my wife went to high school together, graduated the same year, in fact, so. And I appreciate certainly the Silvas. And again, we don't have, are you the only remaining feedlot still in, in the county? Gary? I think you're it. So, so I mean, so if you have an opportunity to see a operating feedlot and sort of cattle operation, you know, the Silvas would be a good opportunity to can, make a field trip out of it and get out a chance to, to see. And certainly the folks that make it go, like, like Miggy and certainly Juan, both of them, and colleagues that, you know, put in a lot of hard labor. But, you know, the result is good food and fiber for our community, but certainly for the state and for, you know, nation, maybe the world in some cases, so.
Yep. Yeah. So in closing, I just want to thank the industry members and ag producers who provided the data necessary to produce this report, to my ag department staff who assisted with the creation of the report, from collating the data. Thank you, Laura McCready, who's here today. And taking the amazing photos. All the photos are taken by our staff, so they're all county staff, amateur photographers, and our industry members. And lastly, I'd like to thank all the ag industry members represented today by this special group for working day in and day out to bring us the food that we, we expect on our tables every night. I'm truly grateful and just thank you, a special thank you to you guys.
Thank you.
Great.
And so at this time, I'd actually, Gary, did you want to say anything? You come up to the podium.
Yeah, come on, Gary, sure.
And then Virginia, if you want to come up.
And maybe when we're all done with the presentations, we can get a group picture, have all the folks that are here, your staff and our, and our visitors today, and certainly members of the board. And, yeah, good morning, Gary.
Good morning. My name's Gary Silva. Like Don said, and I've known Don since high school and his wife since first grade, so we go way back. But, yeah, it's a long time. It's a pleasure to be here. We've been farming Sacramento County 102 years. And so I want to thank Chris and our staff for doing that because to recognize these peoples, you all know, I couldn't do the ranching that we do and the farming without Miggy and the other people do. My dad's got some workers, been with them 55, almost 60 years.
Wow.
And so for us in agriculture, to recognize the people that make it go in the background, I think's awesome. So I think it's great what they're doing that way. And so I want to thank you that. Don, it's the last time I'll be able to present to you without your retirement, so. We'll stay in touch. So I think it's great. And I just want to thank you guys for allowing this to happen. I think it's a great program to recognize the people that put in the hard work. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Gary. I would just acknowledge, Gary, too, that, again, we're working on our sustainable groundwater plans. And, you know, Gary serves on the Sioux House Resource Conservation District, and you're on the Claywater District, too?
Claywater Board, Secawa, and all the other things that go with it.
Right. Yeah. Important efforts, though. And again, folks from our. And again, folks from our farming and ranching community are, you know, dedicating tremendous hours and, you know, working with their fellow neighbors, and certainly not just in the farming industry, but folks that are ag residential communities. And again, without it, folks like Gary and many others who are dedicating their time, I think we certainly would be very, very short on the ability to craft plans that I think are going to reflect, you know, well on the future of water sustainability in our community. And appreciate your efforts, Gary, those of your colleagues on the various boards you serve on. Again, you do it for the love of your community, because I know you don't get paid to do it. So, and it takes time out of your, again, your busy days, but your contributions are important, and appreciate your contributions, but also your friendship over the years, Gary, you and your family, so.
Thank you. And just another side note, I just want to thank you guys as far as the people that have been helping us. We're Claywater District down there, but for all this time and effort your staff has put in to keep us updated and all the things that have gone and that we're going to have to change to meet the requirements for water. You guys have some tremendous people out there that are helping our little, our irrigation district. So you guys have done a great job on that, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, Michael Peterson's in the audience today. He's our Director of Water Resources. I know Kerry Schmitz and Chris Huntley and others work directly, you know, with and under him. So again, thanks for those comments. Stay there, because I have Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Desmond, both.
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to thank Chris for the report and all the work that has gone into it on behalf of your team. But I really wanted to acknowledge and express my gratitude for really emphasizing in this report, as Mr. Silva mentioned, you know, the people behind the success. And as someone that grew up with a great deal of respect for farmworkers and whose extended family had worked for decades up and down the Central Valley as migrant farmworkers, I think ending with the, you know, the slide that you did and the many references you make to the folks that actually do the very, very hard labor of providing our food and fiber is something that's not lost on me. And it really is also something very similar to comments I made to Mike Testa with our Visitors Bureau some years ago when the Tower Bridge Dinner was first starting and we were really beginning to embrace this farm-to-fork culture and kind of the moniker for the region. And I suggested to him that while you have all these terrific chefs and folks that are, you know, integral to fine dining experiences here in our community, we can't forget the farmworkers. And so since then, there's been a real effort to make that acknowledgement every year when they have that particular event. So I see this as being something very similar to that, and I really do appreciate it.
Thanks, Phil. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and then thank you, and thank you Supervisor Serna. That is such a great feature of that event, that acknowledgement. I just want to thank you all, Chris. Certainly thank you, and thank all of you. I mean, you feed us, and I can think of nothing, you know, more important in society. And so I just thank you from the bottom of my heart. My family has an agricultural background in this county. Actually, Chair Natoli knows more about it than I do, actually. I will just say this, I love these pears, but I think as a final act for your final report, Chair Natoli, it would have been great to have actual pears here for all of us.
We could probably arrange that. We could probably arrange that, maybe some pear cider, so, well, you know.
Thank you all, again, for being here.
Great. Thanks, Reg. Sue?
I just want to thank you, Chris, for your report. Every year, it's like one of the things I look forward to, because I come from farmers, too, and farming is in my heart. I do have a question. I'm wondering if we know what percentage of our crops and food are exported versus here? And has that changed over time at all?
You know, we, so if you, in our report, we actually list the number of phytosanitary certificates that our staff sign off on. Those are the commodities that are being exported to other countries. And every shipment has to have one of those phytosanitary certificates attached to it saying that the commodity is clean and free from pests and disease. And so that's our measure of what's being exported and where, and how much, you know, we're doing. But I don't have a, you know, a percentage of the amount that's being exported, but it's a lot. It's a lot. And we export all over the world, from Sacramento County. So it's in the report on, in one of the pages there, on phytosanitary certificates.
Thank you. I think that the idea of farm-to-fork is really important. And as we, you know, if there were supply chain disruptions or, you know, problems with, you know, our crops, with weather, you know, having these resources in our valley is so important. I want to thank everyone who is part of that. And I also want you to know, Gary, you are in my phone. I have a, I have a voice message. My husband and I are trying to figure out where to fit that half cow. We want to buy it. We're ready to buy it. We just are, we think we're going to buy another freezer. We just don't know.
That's what most of our customers do.
Yeah, that's kind of where we're at, but I haven't forgotten you. I never deleted the message. Thank you all for being here.
Thanks. Thanks, Sue. And my folks, I know Virginia was going to come up. I just would say, too, that, Chris, in the report, because you do, beyond, obviously, the Crop and Livestock Report, and I think recognizing, honoring those who are part of the workforce that make things go in this community, you know, you also work very, very closely with state and federal agencies on invasive pests, because again, those can be threats. Obviously, weather can be certainly something that's not predictable. But when we get invasive pests and trying to make sure that they don't spread in our, you know, and certainly damage our agricultural economy and our food sources. And then also, and the pear that was referenced here goes to the D-Tech program, where you actually have folks that have trained animals that work daily on shipments. And I know with all the shipping that is received through various portals in this community, it's very important to, for things that may contain some of those pests. And so if you just take maybe just a quick minute and talk about those activities, because I think, again, they're highlighted, but they're important, because they protect, you know, what we're talking about here in many different ways. And I want to give Virginia a chance to speak as well, so.
Yeah, so as Supervisor Natoli mentioned, we do have our pest detection program. And one of the highlights in, actually in this 2022, was that we've reduced our Japanese beetle infestation dramatically. So we have an infestation in Rancho Cordova and in Arden Arcade. We had in 2021 over 100 beetles that were trapped. And this summer, we only trapped nine. So the program is working. We have at least one more year of treatment in those areas, and we're hoping to, that we don't catch anything next year. But that is what we do, is we, we're proactive about trapping. We appreciate it when our community allows us to put the silly-looking little traps in their fruit trees, because it's really important to agriculture, finding these pests before they become an issue, before they become established, so that we can work to eradicate them. And we've had a few other pest finds this year, Oriental Fruit Flies. We found in Wilton, worked really closely with the state. And actually, my staff, Kevin Martin is here. He is, you know, we get a pest find, he oversees that program, and they're on it. I mean, we have staff out in the field the next hour placing traps. And I can't thank my staff enough for the work they do. And then, like you mentioned, we have the two dog teams. And they're, we were actually honored at the California Ag Commissioners and Sealers Association this year for having the best dog teams in the state. And that was really nice and really contributes to my staff and the hard work that they do. But it was based on pest finds, and they're just so efficient at finding those unmarked packages containing pests.
And I think with the amount of shipping, I mean, obviously you have different shippers, you know, the portals, there would be Postal Service and, you know, UPS and FedEx and, I don't know, Amazon, if they actually, you know, are a secondary handler. But so with two dogs and two teams, you've got to be a lot of places in order to, I think, be effective. And so kudos to the awards. I wasn't aware that you got the statewide award. That's, that's.
Yeah, it was nice.
Kudos to our staff and to our team, so. Okay, all right. Virginia, you've been very patient. Good morning.
Virginia Chabra, Green and Hemley, we're in the Delta. Supervisor Frost, I can give you a smidgen of export information. Pears to Mexico. That's the extent of my knowledge as far as export goes. 10% to 15% almost every year.
That's all.
That's all. The rest of it is, well, and other exports. I cannot tell you what goes to Canada. I can't tell you what goes to Panama. I can't tell you what goes farther overseas, but pears to Mexico, 10% to 15%.
I could tell you rice goes to Japan. We produce, we produce some of the finest sushi rice in the world, and we actually export rice to Japan for that purpose. I know this because it's largely grown in the district I represent.
Supervisor Natoli, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you very, very much for all of your work for the district over the years. It is extremely appreciated, extremely noticed, and you're an example for everyone. So just thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Thanks to your friendship and that of your family as well. So I've enjoyed the opportunity to come to know you and certainly for hosting us from time to time, not just for tours, but serious conversations about water and the future of the Delta. And again, you're true champions of the Delta, and all of you that are here today and all of your colleagues in agriculture. We're blessed in this community, because we do have still many family farms and ranches, generational, as you see in the folks that are here today. Very committed through, you know, good times and not-so-good times. But I think, again, are major contributors beyond just the agricultural activity. And as I said with Gary on water, certainly Virginia and her family as it relates to water and the Delta and the future of those communities. And they take leadership roles, and they do it willingly, but they do it out of their time, but because they care, because they're committed, and their roots are here. And so again, thanks to all of the folks in the agricultural community, but certainly those that are represented here today. Again, your work is appreciated as well. So unless you have any other comments, do we have any commenters on the phone? If not, we're going to get a photo, so.
We do not.
Okay, so why don't we get a photo? We'll invite all the folks up, including our ag commissioner staff, and let's do it out here in the well.
Should we all hold the pear?
Here, Desmond. Here, Rich, you're going to hold the pear. I'll be right back to you.
I would like steak, Tom.
Hi, how do you want us?
Yeah, we can come behind.
Nice to meet you, Dan.
Dan, who's the new manager?
We're getting better.
I'll get on the side.
Nice job. I like to stay tall and tight, too, by the way.
Thank you. Very cute. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three, I'm taking a whole bunch.
You're driving nuts.
Thank you. Oh, I love it. We don't do a candy.
Thanks for having us. Thanks to our staff, too. Good to see you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, guys, for all you do.
Okay, with that, again, thanks to all our visitors, and we'll move on to our next item.
All right, item 38, this is the vote for Reclamation District Number 1,000 trustees.
Okay, Mr. Peterson. Again, kudos to you and your staff for your work on groundwater.
That was really nice to hear. Really appreciated that.
That's great. Thanks, Mike.
Michael Peterson, Water Resources. This is essentially the voting for candidates for Reclamation District 1,000 Board of Trustees on behalf of the county, as the county does own 310 parcels within the Reclamation District 1,000 area. There are three candid, or three open seats on the Board of Trustees, so 310 votes, or parcels, times three equals 930 total votes that the county can cast. And that's allocated to 186 votes per board member. And you can cast those votes in any manner, distribution you want, across all seven candidates that are running for the three seats or only one. But that's completely up to your discretion. Each of you should have a tally sheet, which you can apportion by percentage, how you would allocate your votes. Those will be collected, given to the clerk, and then passed on to myself. And either I or Brandon Ladd will tally those and then deliver those to Reclamation District 1,000's offices today as they're holding their election today.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Let me ask board members first, any questions? I know we received some correspondence this morning.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just like a refresher on how we've, yeah, how we allocated our votes in the past.
I think it's ranged typically equal distribution amongst all the candidates. There may have been a time where there was independent or individual allocations between board members, but I think that.
I seem to recall, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was also instances where we had a great deal of deference shown to the incumbents. And as you'll no doubt acknowledge, recently at Safka, for instance, we did equally allocate the votes to the two incumbents. So I just wanted to be clear on what we've, you know, how we've handled this in the past in terms of the county votes.
And specifically to each prior time, I don't know how each one was done. Again, your suggestion would probably be just as appropriate.
Well, let's ask the encyclopedia to my right.
I just, I think it's been done a couple of different ways. I mean, and we've also done this with the Natomos Mutual Water Company, I think, where we've cast votes, because we have the airport properties and some of the properties that are mentioned here. I can recall one instance where we had the individual ballots, and I think we had the ability to split them. I didn't recall, though, what was a little different here was that you actually gave or assigned each board member a certain signature of votes. It was that we kind of tallied it and then did some other division of math, but.
Yeah, I think the end result is the same.
Yeah. Yes, it is, Michael, yeah. And I just note that, obviously, I think to Supervisor Serna's point, there has been on a couple of previous occasions, as I recall, deference to incumbents, you know, but not solely. I think it was still given some autonomy as a board member to cast the votes. It's a fair, I know what we did at Safka was along those lines, and we did receive a comment letter on that, so. Any other comments by board members? If not, Flo, we did receive a letter this morning, and you noted that for the record from one of the candidates.
And then you also have a caller.
Oh, you do have a caller? Okay, very good. Okay, all right. Any other questions for Michael? If not, we'll go to, I don't know if anybody signed up on this item in the audience here this morning, so let's go to our caller then.
All right.
Okay, good.
Hi, caller, please start your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes, good morning, Chair Natoli and members of the board. My name is Ed Perez. I'm a resident of District 1, and I'm actually one of the seven candidates running for the RD 1,000 Board.
Good morning, Ed.
And today, the board's meeting to consider apportioning the 930 votes that the county has available to cast for the RD 1,000 elections. And I think you can probably see that these votes can significantly affect this election. You're effectively casting the people's vote, and I ask that you take an approach that's fair. And in that regard, I urge you to cast your respective votes in such a way that they are equally apportioned among the seven candidates who are running. equally apportioned among the seven candidates who are running. Your, your action today is even more critical because two other institutional voters, namely the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, and most recently, the City of Sacramento, recently voted to apportion their votes to support the two, the two incumbents that are on the RD 1,000 Board that are on the ballot. And I, I do want to just mention as well that over the, probably the last couple of election cycles, RD 1,000 has made great strides in opening up the process for electing trustees. They've done tremendous outreach, and it's paid off because we have seven candidates who are running. And many of these candidates are very, very qualified, great background and the kind of work that trustees will be performing. So in, in my mind, to cast the county's institutional vote to benefit any particular candidate, it seems kind of contrary to what the district's been trying to do in opening up the process. So again, I urge you to cast your votes in a way that's equally apportioned among the seven candidates. I think that's the fairest way to go. And again, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate your comments, and we've received your correspondence as well. Thanks. Okay. All right, any other callers? Any other callers? No, 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 no other callers? Okay.
No.
All right. Then I'll bring it back to the board, so, yeah, I'm sorry. Phil, go ahead.
So let me just say I appreciate Mr. Perez calling in as he has and as a follow-up to his earlier email. I guess there's, there are a couple of different ways you can look at this. You know, I think his point is well taken, but I, I think there's also something to be said for the incumbency too. And, you know, the question I have is it, is it really fair to, I guess, spread the vote across all, you know, all the candidates who to date have, some have, you know, basically just put their name on the ballot, which, you know, I certainly don't want to discredit or minimize the fact that candidacy for anything in our community is not to be taken lightly. But I also, you know, want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that we have two incumbents, again, who I don't think have done anything in particular to receive less support. And, you know, again, for the sake of consistency, I think we had a good discussion before the vote at Safka. And, you know, I respectfully ask that we give that consideration to the two incumbents.
Okay, thank you, Phil. And there are three seats. I'm sorry, Desmond as well? Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I appreciate Supervisor Turner and agree. So could we just, I mean, could we structure this any way we want as far as how we allocate these? I mean, for instance, could we make a motion that a third go to each of the incumbents and the remaining third get split among the remaining candidates? I mean, or do we have to do it on an individual basis?
I think you can do it any manner you choose amongst yourselves. That, that's just a structural, you know, template that was suggested, but you can do it any way you'd like.
So, so you're suggesting we take a third and, and that would be assigned to five others?
Yeah, split up the, I was just thinking, I mean, just off the top of my head, a third for each incumbent, and then the remaining third be split up among the, the other candidates? Just, just floating it out there as an idea.
Yeah.
So I'll make that motion.
Sure.
Second.
So the motion is to cast a third of the votes for Mr. Baines, a third of the votes for Ms. Reader, and then the remaining votes would be, as Phil said, cast amongst the five who are seeking to fill the, the one, well, seeking to fill all the seats, but, okay. So that's the mo, that's the motion and the second. Any other comments about that? Phil?
No. But do we, do we literally have to? Or can we just let the record?
I'd ask County Council, this is.
I think you can.
I think you can just do it on the record.
Yeah.
Without filling out the form.
Okay, all right, so somebody will fill in the, they will fill in the blanks based on the motion. Okay, so that is the motion then. If any further comments or questions? If not, then please put it in.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Let the record reflect that Patrick Kennedy is not here today.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Michael. Thank you, my colleagues. Thank you to all the folks who are seeking election to those three offices. And it just happens to coincide with Election Day, so, all right. And Michael, you make sure that you get to them before 5:00 or whenever it is, right? Okay, all right, very good. You're in charge. Okay. All right, with that then, we're gonna go to our next item. I know we have some folks in the audience, so.
Okay, item 39 is the Community Corrections Partnership Assembly Bill 109 Public Safety Realignment Plan 2022 Update.
Very good. Okay, and we have Mr. Yarber, Marlon.
Good morning. Morning, Chair, members of the board. Yes, all right, so Marlon Yarber, Chief Probation Officer here today on behalf of the Community Corrections Partnership. So I've got a brief PowerPoint to walk you through, and we'll highlight some of the changes in this year's plan. So as you know, the CCP recommends the plan to this board, to the board statewide, and it is deemed accepted unless rejected by you all on a four-fifths vote. Though the CCP has that responsibility for development of the plan, it's really you all that possess the authority as it relates to deciding where the resources will go or where the funding will, will go that's resultant from, from the assembly bill. Since the long-term plan.
Excuse me, Marlon, just for a second, if you just pause a question.
Yeah, let's not interrupt this fast.
That's all right.
But for those that may be watching remotely, Marlon, could you just give a very brief, or Eric, a very brief overview of what AB 109 is? Because we were, we're just jumping right to the.
Sure.
Plan, and there's probably a lot of people who are not familiar with what the legislation is.
Sure, sure. I will take a stab at that, Supervisor. You know, it's, it's a great question because, you know, we live it and so don't want to take for granted that some folks don't always. So in 2011, 2011, Assembly Bill 109 passed. Essentially, the bill is referred to as Public Safety Realignment. And what it does is shifts responsibility for certain categories of folks who are in the criminal justice system and moves that responsibility from state jurisdiction to county jurisdiction. So for certain list of enumerated crimes, folks who would have gone on to prison now would serve their commitments, if you will, here locally in the county jail. And for that same list of enumerated offenses, folks who were getting out of prison would no longer be under supervision of the California Department of Corrections Adult Parole Division, but would instead be supervised by probation departments statewide. And so for us, with those sort of two pots in mind, it's meant about 1,200 to 1,500, what we call now post-release community supervision folks, or people coming to us from state prison, being released and directly reporting to the probation department. And about 500 to 700, I believe annually, of the mandatory supervision folks are those people who would have previously gone to prison but are now being committed to the county jail. And so with the law being enacted, it's required counties develop these plans, much done under the, the direction of the Community Corrections Partnership chaired by the Chief Probation Officer in every county. And it does essentially what I will describe in the way of addressing the needs of that population, local needs of the system, with the idea that there will hopefully be better outcomes at the back end. And so perhaps it is timely in that some of what I will talk about today will actually touch upon some of the changes which really get at the metrics, if you will, in trying to measure whether or not we've been successful at this effort. It is a huge shift, if you will, and a change in certainly policy and as it relates to our work, certainly impacts operations and remains a priority, particularly in the probation department. You know, despite, you know, whatever has come our way, we continue to prioritize that population as we recognize public safety being the number one goal for us. So, you know, maybe I'll pause there and see if Deputy County Exec has any, any other comments.
Great, thank you, Chief.
No, you're very welcome, very welcome. So, yeah, forgive me because, again, we, we live it, so it's, it's every day for us. So let's see. So I was just about to say, so since 2014, which I think in that year we put together what, what has often been referred to as our long-term plan, we've been working at the stated priorities, you know, not unlike what I just mentioned in the way of supporting public safety, et cetera. In 2020, the Budget Act, State Budget Act, added the requirement that we produce a plan annually and submit that plan to the Board of State and Community Corrections, who is tasked with collecting all of the plans from county jurisdictions. The previous plan had been approved by you all, by, by the CCP as well as you all back in May of 2021. And I will say that with that sort of annual requirement, we are now on a bimonthly schedule for the CCP to convene, as well as a monthly schedule of the Community Corrections Partnership Advisory Board. And that advisory board was created here locally in 2022, I believe. This year sort of took formal shape, and it's really been tasked with providing recommendations to the CCP itself. The advisory board includes four community members as well as representatives from all of the agencies that participate in the partnership. And, you know, at this moment, I really would hope to just pause for just a second. I want to make sure I thank the Chair of the Community Corrections Partnership Advisory Board, Melinda Avi. She's not here, but hopefully she's watching. She's had just the, the Herculean task of trying to corral what are offering, often differing perspectives as it relates to how we go about this work. And has, as you will see, has helped us achieve unanimous votes on the, the condition of the plan and its recommendation to the CCP.
I would just echo your thanks to Melinda. She's served in different capacities on advisory bodies to this board for many, many years, and has logged hours in these chambers, relates to budget items, and certainly reflective, obviously, of the membership of the body she's served on. But we very much appreciate Melinda's leadership, certainly this role, but in other roles as well. So thanks for calling it out, Marlon.
Agreed. Appreciate those comments, Chair. So let's see, next slide. So the advisory board has utilized ad hoc committees to take up some of their work. So they've looked at things like budget and program. I think one of their areas of focus going forward will be further community engagement. So I anticipate they're going to be establishing a, an ad hoc committee to address that. In, let's see, in September, the CCP unanimously voted to approve the plan, and I referenced that the CCP has also unanimously supported the plan. I will note that at our October 6 meeting, I wanted to make sure I was able to confirm this, but there was absolutely no public comment, which was surprising to me. So again, another sort of shout out or recognition of the work that the advisory board was able to do.
And this is a Brown Act body, correct?
Correct, correct. So those meetings are open and I believe pretty well attended and have had some robust discussions, we will say.
Are they televised as well?
I'm not certain, I don't, don't believe.
They better be, because I was the one that made.
Yeah, no, I know, that's why I was.
Made the suggestion several years ago.
The advisory board is not.
The advisory board is not.
The partnership is, okay. But the CCP is, Chair.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So a little bit about the plan and the updates. So the plan and the content, really, the structure largely unchanged. The goals, as I said, are still very similar, if not the same, as when we began this work. So keeping public safety is our first priority, looking next at reducing recidivism, and then, of course, trying to do what we can to decrease the use of the jail through work with community-based organizations and community-based treatment. A lot of the funding that the county agencies receives is actually sub-granted to, or subcontracted, contracted, excuse me, to many of our community-based partners, and they help with really delivering some of the supports that we know further our efforts at, at success, if you will. The other priority recommendations, I won't read the list to you, they should all be very familiar, but certainly alternatives to incarceration, looking at data, as I suggest, the jail housing and inmate services, of course, community supervision, which is often squarely in the laps of the probation department. The AB 109 workload augmentation, I don't know why we call it that, but that is jargon, if you will, for, I believe, the funds that are set aside to address needs of the DA's crime lab, as well as impacts to the system, particularly the court and court partners relative to hearings that are required of us when there are parolees or probationers who are back before the court. And then lastly there, not to miss or underscore, not, not to miss the last point, but really underscoring the needs of benefit eligibility, transitional housing, and of course, jail discharge planning.
If I may, through the chair, add one thing. So Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive, Public Safety and Justice. And as mentioned, the Community Corrections Partnership CCP meetings, those are televised. The CCP Advisory Board, as mentioned, is not, but they are moving into a hybrid solution here this year, so it is more transparent.
When you say hybrid, what's, what's that mean?
Of in-person and virtual.
Okay, very good. Okay, thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Good.
So some of the changes in the 2022 Plan Update includes, you know, enhanced metrics, as I've referenced. We've moved, moved largely towards adopting the Board of State and Community Corrections definition for recidivism, which looks at, I believe, convictions in the three-year period once someone leaves incarceration and/or has been under some level of supervision in the community. For us, I think there are some, maybe some, a few system constraints. I think we're also, or alternatively, perhaps, looking at arrests, if you will, for both felonies and misdemeanors. In addition to that, there's a lot of data out there, just open source data. The California Department of Justice has some nice interactive pages where you can look at our particular jurisdiction and sort, if you will, and, and develop and produce your own trends. In addition to that, the Board of State and Community Corrections, or BSCC, also has its traditional jail profile survey, which looks at things like average daily population, bookings, number of sentenced and unsentenced inmates, types of crimes, et cetera. I don't know. Oh, included on my, on my PowerPoint, you'll see there, certainly want to make sure we call out the reporting of demographic data. It's no secret that we still struggle with disproportionality in our system, and so being better able to see, you know, where that exists and how we can get upstream to address some of the, the needs and issues within communities and help, help hopefully reduce that on the back end. All of this will essentially roll up into what we hope is more regular reporting to the CCP, you know, on, done really largely by the Community Corrections Partnership Advisory Board. But that will inform really our decisions and reform, and inform our planning efforts and, of course, be before you all for consideration. The plan also, interestingly, this time around, does touch upon service gaps, as well as some of the gaps with regards to our county-wide or system-wide response to the May's consent decree. So we hope for a more robust continuum of supports, specifically thinking about post-custody, so things like re-entry supports, alcohol and drug treatment, mental health treatment, and certainly employment in custody. It's things more like cognitive-based treatments and obviously beginning those re-entry efforts before someone hits the door and comes back to the community. With May's, I don't want to steal our thunder. I know there's a, a full presentation planned for just a few weeks out, I think December 7th. But please know that all of the partners amongst the partnership, as well as our allied agencies within health and social services, have had some very detailed discussions about how we can expand, improve, better address the needs of our clientele, better address the needs of public safety, and certainly try to reduce where we can the population that's in custody, prevent the return also of folks into custody. And so that includes things like diversion, you know, looking at length of stay, looking at alternatives, looking at additional sites, let's say, for the probation department, you know, could we cite an additional day reporting center? Can we do more to embed health and mental health in our operations? So all of those things, I think you will hear a bit more in detail come the, the presentation involving May's. But I wanted to make sure that you knew we did not miss that point, and certainly we'll be looking to you all for direction on how we can further leverage this particular funding stream to address our shared interests. So with that, let me also just state, you know, we've, we've continued to prioritize community engagement and want to do more of that, so appreciate the interest in the meetings themselves and.
and look forward to, you know, the further support of that effort at the advisory board level and certainly among the CCP.
Lauren, if I just could, before you leave that, excuse me, as it relates to the May's consent decree, and obviously we're going to have, as you said, in a few weeks, a very focused discussion on that, but the language in the plan on page 53 of 72, I guess the one word that maybe I would want to emphasize in different ways says, "Once the findings, consistent with what you said of these reports," as it relates to the compliance, as well as obviously the, some of the current limitations related to facilities and so forth, says, "Once those findings are made public and direction from the Board of Supervisors has been received, the CCP may be looked upon to implement or expand on particular programs." And I guess I would, before we even advance that discussion, I would say, I would say will be looked to, because again, these, this funding stream and the thematic elements you're talking about here as it relates to people both inside and outside of the institutions, but also some of the things that are being done that are, you know, foundational, I would just, I would say that, you know, and maybe people won't be in presumptions in writing a report, but I'll just, as one board member, I would say the CCP will be looked upon to expand on particular programs aimed at reducing the jails ADP, but also certainly utilizing those AB 109 funds in ways that, you know, make a difference in the lives of people in this community. So again, that wasn't necessarily a change of word, but I just, I wanted to emphasize that as I read this paragraph and heard you speak to it, so.
No, no, no surprise there, Chair. I think we all anticipate that and certainly just don't want to get ahead of direction that you all might give.
I gather that, so, thanks, Lauren.
You're welcome.
All right, go ahead. Did it conclude, anything else?
I'm all finished.
Oh, you are, okay, very good. Okay, so bringing back to the board, yeah, Ms. Jones.
If you don't mind me adding one thing. So also, we know that the AB 109 realignment monies go to primarily probation, sheriff's office, but as you saw, two of the closed, or I'm sorry, two of the consent items today, 28 and 29, or 27 and 28, are where this money is then going to CBOs, community-based organizations. And in fact, over the last fiscal cycle, 25 various community-based organizations received funding through probation or the sheriff's office. And for example, today's were automotive jail training, reentry specialists in addiction and cognitive behavioral therapy. Just these are examples of, you see many of these items coming frequently, where this funding is going for community-based interventions and reentry programs.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Jones. That's an important connectivity, obviously, of the funding, but to, you know, where it's being outsourced to community-based organizations for efforts that hopefully, again, reflect well on the ability to help folks who, you know, have, you know, entered the justice system, whatever entry point, but also hopefully you can help them redirect and not reenter, so. Okay, any other comments by board members? Again, thank you, Chief. And I don't have anyone sign up to speak. Oh, here comes Lydia. I do, I see two people in the audience.
We don't have any callers, by the way, Mr. Natoli.
Very good, okay. So we have Mackenzie and Keon. So Mackenzie?
It's still, still good morning.
I give thanks for the story brought in here earlier. You see, I actually know Robert Jones, too. He helped us during the COVID releases from the jail in 2020, when advocates and unhoused folks met folks being released from the jail with, without an increase to crime, I'll add, with love to and access to resources. They could have been loved more, had this county had more love to give them. Which brings me to AB 109 funding. The tens of millions of dollars that the county has for reentry, diversion, and community-based services to love folks with, historically and repeatedly again today, is being used to fund sheriff and probation, with no measurement of its impact on our community's ability and opportunity to be loved, let alone with measurements of the love we are showing our community. Love from state auditor's offices have said, "Without comprehensive planning and oversight, counties cannot ensure that their decisions regarding the use of public safety realignment funds are well-informed," and that they stand by their report's conclusion that the CCP's interpretation of the scope of public safety realignment is overly narrow. And when we look at this county's direction of building more jail, increasing jail spending, and with a jail reduction plan that is built upon it, and the bare minimum to show love and aiming for the floor, the jail population reduction plan, you know, for the bare, I'm sorry, for the bare floor of the jail reduction plan, then understand me and listen to this community and all my love when I say that the scope of public safety and AB 109 realignment funding is overly narrow. If we use this money to fund alternatives to incarceration and the reentry and love of folks we need to release, not just because a lawsuit has proven how little love there is in that jail, not just in the treatment of people, but the proof that the people inside are most vulnerable and unloved. Over 40% of our jail is black, 60% suffer from mental health crisis, 30% severe mental health crisis, increased meaning 100 beds into jail is severely narrow in scope. 30% of our jail is homeless, 40% of folks are in there due to warrants or probation. I could go on and on about what kind of harm instead of love there is inside of the jail. The unloving treatment of our folks inside is well documented for you in monitoring reports. And love in those seats means that you have read them, or at least now you will. Love looks like using this money to fund housing, food access, education, workforce development, healthcare, mental wellness, the things that are and create love, not to continue to perpetuate the cycles of support, I mean, of cycles and support what happens behind the walls where love is not. Love uses this money to support the release of our jail population and the housing and the services needed to support the release and to love them better outside and prevent them from ever going back in. Love is not approving this today without an analysis of how it could be used to support a more loving approach to us reducing our jail population. This is not just required by lawsuit, or I'm sorry, the jail population reduction that is not just required by lawsuit, but because love in this community and experts have been trying to get you to love harder with this money for years. Love encourages us to use the creative mind, to have more intention, and to look at all the resources we have in our abundance to facilitate our ability to be love and show love to our community, and by prioritizing how to love our most vulnerable populations that have been let down by our absence of love. Love is not Robert Jones sitting outside in the rain across from the Sacramento Housing Authority and across from the jail for years as we continue on with this meeting on how we can spend more money on the jail systems that continue to bleed our ability to have resources and love in this community. Love is asking for a breakdown of this spending, of how it maintains and improves community love and safety, reducing recidivism, how it reduces recidivism, and addresses the needs of folks impacted by disenfranchisement. And of how much money decreasing, I'm sorry, and of how much of this money is being used to decrease the jail through expansion of community-based alternatives and interventions to harm and crime, because they are rooted in love versus supervision to make sure we stay in line with the rat race. When adding up everything from 2015, and I am almost done, so far, 52% of the sheriff's department has gone to the sheriff's department, 30% to probation, 10% to jail corrections and health. And love is patient and with intention, and that means that we can pause this and wait until it's going to be spent, or to wait to see how it is going to be spent as a part of our already inadequate plan to meet the consent decree, and how it could be spent to support a better and more loving plan and include it as part of next month's presentation on the upcoming jail expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, follow Mackenzie, Keon Bliss.
Wow, I don't think I've addressed you all in like three years.
I know, good, it's been good to see you back in chambers, Keon. You've been on the phone, but you haven't been in here, so good to see you.
So couldn't agree more with what my friends, Mackenzie, just said. And honestly, I mean, the numbers are right there, but they are not on this presentation, which, I mean, why are, what is the point of even having all those words on a screen when you're not even willing to show the data that is, the community members have been requesting for years? Let's think about like how much we're putting into the sheriffs. I mean, as was just said, you know, since 2015, AB 109 funds have gone, has received 40 to 60 million per year, just to Sacramento County. 56% going to the sheriff's department, 36% going to the probation's department. And what have we got now of that? A federal consent decree because our conditions inside the jail system are grossly inhumane and it's only getting worse. And here we are in like just a few weeks, going to be considering whether we need to expand our jail system rather than putting this money into actual community-based services that they say that, that the Community Corrections Partnership says that they're funding, but really aren't funding intentionally, much less in a level adequate to the sheriff's department or probation's department. In fact, if you, as a board, which you all have the power of the purse and have complete authority to decide how, like how funding is spent and can exercise influence over these departments, if you even just allocated a certain amount of funding to actually staffing mental health services, which Sacramento County is sorely needing and really struggling to provide, you could actually address a lot of the longstanding community needs that are, like, that we have been sitting with for years, and this mental health crisis that we have and the homelessness crisis. For example, the average salary of a sheriff's deputy makes about $101,000, just in total pay. That doesn't count the benefits that the Sacramento County pays out to sheriff's deputies, just their total pay. But if you were to cut the salary, if you were to cut salary worth of two sheriff's deputies, around $202,000, you could end up funding five behavioral health peer specialists, or four mental health workers, or three social workers, or three health educators, or five EMTs, or four paramedics, or an equivalent combination of any of those kinds. And for just $13 million, which you could easily take and allocate from the AB 109 funds, which the Community Corrections Partnership doesn't really see fit as a worthwhile expenditure, you could actually fund over 330 behavioral health peer specialists, 267 mental health workers, or 200 social workers, or 200 health educators, or 330 EMTs, or any equivalent combination of those kinds. And that's just at the minimum salary level. And that doesn't even get to how much we actually value these mental health care workers, these health workers, given that Sacramento County's current job postings for a behavioral health peer specialist ranges between $41,000 and $50,000, just on an annual salary basis. Mental health workers that are licensed is just $58,000 and $70,000. I see my time, and I will finish up in just a moment. But when you look at the base salary of a deputy sheriff, that's $83,000 to $112,000 that we are paying, that we offer sheriffs annually, just at higher. And then, probations, I'm sure, like, is relatively comparable. Deputy probation officer is at $83,000, $101,000. Imagine if you allocated some of these AB 109 funds to increasing the salary cap, the salary range for mental health workers, non-law enforcement personnel that can actually provide these mental health care services, you actually might be able to address this mental health crisis, rather than just pretending like we're addressing the symptoms that sheriff and probation's pretend like they're actually addressing.
Thank you, Keon. Okay, no one else signed to speak in chambers? Do we have callers on?
We do not have any callers.
Okay, all right. Again, thanks to our speakers and to our presenters. Go back, bring it back to the board. Do we have any other questions or comments, board members? All right, seeing none, then motion would be in order. That's the will of the board. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the plan as presented. Please vote.
Okay, unanimous vote with those members present. Let the record reflect that Supervisor Kennedy is not present today.
All right. Okay, and I trust we'll have more discussion around this in a few weeks. Okay, with that then, that concludes the morning's agenda. We do have a closed session and.
Still have your nominations.
I'm gonna get to, okay. And then do our nominations, and as we do board member comments, I would trust after the closed session, we'll, okay. So let's go to our nominations, item number 40, please.
You are continuing to December 6, the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, continuing to December 13, the Adult and Aging Commission, Area for Agency on Aging Advisory Council, Civil Service Commission, Disability Advisory Commission, Human Services Coordinating Council, Public Health Advisory Board. And for today, you only have two, I think. And your first is the County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasunus.
Nominate Kathy Zhao and put the remainder over, there's one other seat to December 13, please.
Okay. And then your Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to December 13.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
All righty, so we'll go to our comments as we'll go to closed session, but we won't return back to chambers, so, all right. Can I execute? Yeah?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. No, no comments today, thank you.
All right, so board members, Supervisor Frost.
Sure.
Yeah, can we, so we do an adjournment, again, we would adjourn to closed sessions, not return to.
Correct.
Open session, so appropriate to do now. Okay, go ahead. I don't think, I didn't see any other comments, so we'll do the adjournment.
Great, thank you. This afternoon, I'm sad to say goodbye to our good friend Gordon Purdy. Gordon Purdy was born to the late Byron and Clara Purdy Salvation Army Ministers in Strathroy, Ontario, Canada, on April 19, 1936. He passed away of natural causes on October 24, 2022, surrounded by his loving family. Gordon was survived by Lola Purdy, his wife of 46 years, and their son Chris Purdy and wife Katie Bramlett, his two children Ken Purdy, Pam Cosoy, and Sandra Purdy, from his first wife Lorna, his five granddaughters, Roderick McDonald, Rose Presley, William McDonald, Andrew Younger, Nicole Younger, Eileen Purdy, and Adam Purdy, his great-grandchildren Sky and Fay McDonald, and his sister Marion Wilfong, and husband Al Wilfong. Gordon was an active member of the Rotary Club in historic Folsom and Hope Church in Folsom. He worked for IBM for 30 years in Canada, New York, Georgia, and most recently partnered with his wife Lola in real estate. Gordon developed a love for music in his early years, playing trombone in the Salvation Army Band in Canada. His love for music continued later in life as he enjoyed attending symphony, concerts, and singing in the church choir. His greatest joys were his family and friends, playing golf and drinking wine with others. Gordon was a man of deep faith and was known by his friends for his welcoming spirit, his wit, and his great sense of humor. He was kind, brave, and a true gentleman to the end. He will be greatly missed. Gordon was a good friend from Folsom, and we will, we'll miss him.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. So we will adjourn in memory of Gordon Purdy, and thank you for the wonderful acknowledgement. Before we do adjourn, just one other reminder for those who are watching, again, obviously election day, it's midday, and encourage folks to get out and vote, be safe in your travels. And with that, we're going to adjourn in memory of Gordon Purdy. We also will adjourn to closed session, not return back to open session, and any action to be taken out could be announced at the next meeting, is that correct, Lisa?
Correct.
Okay, very good. So anything else coming for this, I didn't have anybody else sign up to speak, and if not, I thank our clerk's office. Did you wish to address the board? No? Okay, very good. Okay, with that then, we will adjourn into closed session.